I should say, do you have to call downstairs? I don't know how to do it.
It's been awhile, I forgot. What is the number one?
Well, as much as I can. Or just taking the long loop around.
They're not available.
They're not available?
They're downstairs, I went down.
I know, but they weren't answering the phone. But we're on the television screen here. So I guess we can start.
Alright, well it's time. Alright, good evening, welcome to the July 13th New Market Planning Board meeting. Will you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next up is public comments. Is there anybody out there that wants to talk about something that's not? I didn't think so. A closed public comment at 7:01. Next is review and approval of the minutes of June 8th. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion? Comments?
Yeah, on page 7, line 19. The town attorneys are working with the applicant on this, this is regarding Neil Milrow.
Yes.
Is the town attorney working with the owner?
No.
Or working with the conservation commission or?
The issue is closed.
Right, that's why I was wondering why it says the town attorneys are working with the applicant on this.
Well, this was dated June 8th before they withdrew the application.
But this was actually Scott. Scott, what did you mention on that? This was your report.
That thing is withdrawn.
Okay. So there was really nothing relative to the town attorneys?
No.
I guess I'm a-
Well, maybe what I said was the town attorneys are looking at making it a Class A trailer.
Okay, so the town attorneys are working on this, so with the applicant should be deleted.
Yes.
Okay. That may only comment.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the minute, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Before we start the meeting, Mikel, I will appoint you to sit in tonight. We do have, Japh and Tim are both, have excused absences, so they will not be here. So first on the agenda is the Walter Cheney Jr., Cheney Property Management Corp., continuation of a public hearing for an application for a site plan and special use permit for a mixed-use development. The proposal is to amend the site plan for the previously approved site plan. The owner has purchased an additional adjacent lot and is proposing to add 17 residential units to the project for a total of 28 units. The project involves the construction of two buildings. One building is a three-story mixed-use structure with a 13,388 square foot footprint with commercial uses on the first floor and residential units on the second and third floors. The second building is a two-story building with four residential units with garages on the ground floor. The lot is located at 50 to 56 Exeter Road, tax map U4, lots 11 and 15 in the M2A zone. Okay. Now we have a request for continuation from individuals representing the applicant. So we would have to continue to a date certain. When is our next meeting, Diane?
It's the second Tuesday of August.
Does anybody have their phone on? I shut mine off.
Hang on, I have my phone right here.
August 10th, thank you Jane.
So I'll entertain a motion to continue that meeting to our August 10th meeting. Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Mr. Dusset is abstaining. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Alright.
I just wanted to report, we do have a TRC meeting on Thursday, July 22nd at 10, nine o'clock in the morning. That was the earliest we could make it, Mike, so it is, sorry.
Alrighty, next up is Sandra Cassidy, Scott Boudreau, LLS. Public hearing for an application for a minor subdivision to subdivide the 7.169 acre lot into two lots. One will be 2.494 acres and one will be 4.675 acres. The lot is located at 169 New Road, tax map R3, lot 46, one zone. Ms. Hardy, do you want to walk us through your opinion whether the application is complete?
Yes, I have reviewed the application against the checklist and it is complete. And there are a few things that I got back to the applicant to go. So we can accept the applicant for technical review this evening.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on the completeness of the application? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve, to accept the application as complete.
I'll make that motion.
So moved by Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jane. Alright, any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the application as complete, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Okay, great, so now I see the, we will now open up the public hearing, I see the applicant is representative is here. Do you want to give the board a brief overview of what the, what you are proposing, please?
Line up, look. My name's Scott Boudreau, Land Surveyor, Boudreau Land Surveying. Hired to do a minor subdivision for-
Oh yes, we need to, yeah.
Alright, I think it's on.
Yes.
Working on a minor subdivision to create two new lots, two lots out of this existing lot. You know, tax map, R3 lot 46, in the R1 zoning district. Meets all the state requirements, it's approved by the state. So that's pretty much the one pocket of wetlands in the- We're able to stay away from that with the leach field and meet all the setbacks that were necessary. We had a variance for the frontage that was approved back in 2009. That's what we're looking at.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Did you have a stamp plan by a wetland scientist?
Not yet, but I have the form.
Can you, in the letter, it referenced the A1 through A42?
Yeah.
And on the plan that we have, it starts at A, I believe that now, A27, I believe?
Yep, so he's, the wetland scientist started the railroad tracks, well off the property. And I did survey those because they were way off.
So that's, that's-
Can you hear me?
This continues through, it's all one delineation.
One line? Okay.
But the wetland scientist, was it Joe?
I think it was Steve Riker, Steve Riker, right?
He did provide a statement.
Yep.
But he did do the entire lot?
Yeah, I pointed out a couple areas I thought were left, and needed to lot, and that's what it was.
And that was done in February?
February, March.
With four to six inches of snow cover?
February 24th. There's a date of the delineation. Bill?
Yeah. So just a couple little things on DES subdivision application for both lots, okay? Yep.
Yeah, it was approved for a 600 gallon per day.
Just move on my head with that one.
Oh, the septic.
600 gallons, what'd you say, Scott?
Yeah, or bedroom lot.
For each parcel, for each lot.
For each parcel, for bedroom septic system.
Got it. That's good. There's a path that you showed just, oh, 46, does that cross onto our property?
No, that goes, that's actually a boundary for one of the property here. Okay, that continues back across the tracks to the bay.
And then, I know you noticed, but you can freeze all that topographic stuff on your, for your recording plan. Don't think that, because there are regs that you have to keep all that on there and attempt to record. Nope, won't work. So I think the planner mentioned something in the review on the access easement. Typically for a shared driveway like this, there's a terminus to the easement in favor of the lot that's refusing it. You know, so that they're not encumbering the entire driveway. So maybe, maybe find out where that is and maybe to mark that on the-
Yeah, I've taken the liberty to do that on this plan. He actually wants to have the right way and easement over this entire strip back to the second corner.
Yeah, I get it.
Just to maintain.
Yep. And then lastly, our regs require granite bounds set at the intersection of existing or proposed sidelines with existing streets. So the front, the front corners, instead of the by, should be bounds.
Okay.
So are you saying that the, that, not the plan we have, but that plan shows the limitation of the easement?
Yeah, I just drew a line from the proposed corner here.
Okay.
To the draw.
To the other pin, alright. So you have state, you have, I'm sorry, you've got subsurface approvals? Do you have subdivision approval from the state as well?
I don't have subsurface for test bits, I mean for something.
Oh, you just have subdivision approval.
Subdivision approval, right.
That's all it needs for the subdivision.
Right. Does anybody have anything else? Val, you okay with the delineation?
Um, well, I mean, I see what I have here, I guess I'm questioning, you know, wetlands with four to six inches of snow cover, how is he really delineating the wetlands and the rest of the lot?
I think it depends on the snow conditions and certain, I mean, Steve Rikers has well respected wetland scientist, so I think that it's reasonable to ask that he stamp this plan.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And oftentimes, even though there's six inches of snow covered on, if it's a forested site, there's not necessarily six inches of snow. Anybody have anything else? What's the pleasure of the board?
Thea Butter has submitted a letter.
Oh, actually, I have it sitting right in front of me, I'm glad you reminded me. So, so I do have a letter I should read into the record. It's from Dominic Fecto. And the message, as a property directly abutting the property in question, we have two concerns to discuss. One, the land parcel in question is very swampy and has at times a foot of water, more standing stagnant in many areas. A, any development of the parcel has potential of routing the large amount of water to flow across my property and potentially cause erosion and/or damage our septic tank and leach field. If not, stay onto private property or the street will be affected by this water. If a comprehensive water mitigation strategy is in the works, this may not need to be brought up at this time. And two, having just replaced our Artisan well pump, we were informed that the oxidation line and the water line were different. This is from Epping well and pump. This suggests the conditions where the water table may be overtaxed and is a concern for adding new drains to the aquifer. And I call out the message on your extension, on Mr. Jordan's extension, that's from Dominic and Jennifer Fecto. That was to Diane Hardy.
And I did speak with him to get some clarification. And I explained to him that the applicants, if you look at the topography on the map, it shows that actually the water is, if there's going to be any water, would be diverted to the east, which would impact Little Field property and not necessarily the property of Mr. Fecto, which if you notice on the footprint of the building on the map, it, the house is actually very, very close to the road. So I didn't feel that there would be an impact. And I did bring that to Mr. Boudreau's attention and he, I don't know if he wanted to add anything further to that. He didn't have any further questions after I talked with him, he was satisfied with the information. And I did direct him to the town's website to look at the plan to verify that.
I think the real issue here is because we're, we're not delineating where a house has to be built on this lot, number one.
But he is showing where the septic system is, Valerie?
Yeah, that's fine.
And where the proposed house lot is.
Right, but what I'm saying is, there's no restrictions on where the house gets put here, other than within the, you know, outside of the setbacks.
Right.
I think under, and within our own regulations under minor site, under minor subdivision, we don't have any drainage requirements. So if there really is any water trespass, that's going to be a civil issue.
Right.
That's right.
Right. And the second point he brought up, I will, I can, I feel comfortable answering that. The oxidation line and the water line are almost never the same spot. Has nothing to do with the aquifer, the rustification or oxidation from, is always above where the actual water is. That's, that indicates the estimated seasonal high water table, not where the water is actually laying. So I don't think that's an issue, I think that's, that happens all the time.
I invited him to come this evening if he still had concerns.
Okay. Thank you for reminding me about that, Val. There you are. Alright, so what's the pleasure of the board? Is there a motion to approve?
Sorry, quick question.
Yeah.
Diane, help me make sure I understood something. You talked about the water concern and it wasn't, it was going to go to the east. And I think you said it would go to the Littlefield family?
Yeah, which they have property that's sort of surrounded by three quarters.
So it's this side, not down here, okay. Alright, that's what I was asking, thank you, okay. I got it.
You got it?
Thanks, yep, certainly. Thank you.
Anybody else out there have anything to add? Any board members have anything? I will close the public hearing at, I'll go that, 7:18? And then, is there a motion to approve?
Can we make that motion with your comments?
Sure.
So I make a motion to approve, the application is submitted with the condition that a wetlands soil scientist stamp be affixed to the face of the plan and that the monuments along New Road be changed to comply with section 3.05. And I'm sorry, I don't recall if there are other conditions in your view.
You had add easement and Scott has-
Which has already been done.
Right, and that would be on the final plan.
Didn't you want easement documents?
Well, I was wondering if we should have a full easement document that spells out not only
You have the past.
The linear location, if you will, of where the easement's going to be, but, you know, things such as who's responsible for maintenance.
Privy maintenance, please.
And, I mean, those are practical things that often come into play down the road if there's change ownership. And I think Scott was okay with that change. Is anyone?
So the conditions are soil scientist, a fixed stamp on plan, modify the monuments along the frontage and provide a copy of the proposed shared driveway easement.
Yep. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Val. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. I'll give you a minute to clean your stuff out. Alrighty, so while they're cleaning up there, next on the agenda, 6680 CC, 86 Main LLC, public hearing for an application for site plan to convert the second and third floors into six residential units as part of the rehabilitation of the historic building. The first floor commercial spaces will remain the same. The lot is located at 86 Main Street, tax map U2, lot 51 in the M2 zone. And while they're setting up, Diane, do you want to walk us through the completeness?
Yeah.
Or what your opinion is of the application?
Yeah, because the applicant is here this evening requesting a waiver for full site plan review requirements. And I did review this with the applicant's engineer in advance and I did go through the checklist and I've identified the areas where there, the plans that have been submitted, which are very detailed and very thorough, I might add. It just doesn't meet all of the requirements. And I've listed those in the memo, so if there's a question on what is, how this plan differs from the requirements, the information is there. Given the situation where the building covers the entire lot basically, and there's really no site plan to review because there's no site to speak of, it seemed like it was reasonable to waiver to the applicant to be able to have this project moved forward. So having that, having said that, I believe that the application is as complete as it can be, given the circumstances. And given that, that we recommend that it be accepted for review and that the board discuss the request for waivers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions?
Comments?
If I hear none, I will entertain a motion to accept the application as complete.
Some move.
Is there a second? Motion's made, seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the application as complete, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, I will now open up the public hearing. Mr. Seibert, do you want to walk us through a quick presentation, please?
Yeah, sure. I'm Mike Seibert of the Rising Engineering, this is Ben Stevins, who's the owner. And Ben is proposing to do a conversion of the second and third floor of the existing building at 86 Main and that's the Masonic Temple, as I'm sure you all know. It's in the first floor, commercial space, and that, as is. Access to the building, as I pointed out, will remain the same to the commercial in the center and the right corner, the northeast corner is the entrance for the residential. And as Diane said, the lot is about 74 feet of frontage, or 28 feet on Main Street and 74 on Central Street. And the building is 28.1 five feet wide. Kind of hangs over here and there. And not quite the full 74, because it doesn't come out to the sidewalk up front or partially onto the sidewalk, so. It does take up literally the whole lot, just about. And I don't know, the, I guess the, we went to the ZBA, got a special exception. There's a, there was a, a report, fiscal and other reports, I don't know.
Fiscal and market analysis.
That was accepted and proven to be adequate and there was some variances, obviously, for the dimensional requirements and for the residential, six per acre density, of course. So this is 2,000 square foot lot, 0.05 acres.
So, and, you know, so everything that is being done is being done inside. And we've tried to show, we did a boundary survey, which I've brought and shown. And I did a site plan, which is really not much different than that plan, but it, it kind of identified the entrances and some of the utilities that particularly wouldn't show up necessarily on a survey, so I've identified all that stuff. But that, that was it as far as the site plan, so that's why I was asking for a waiver to the site plan regulations. And this, doesn't look like this falls under a minor site plan, I don't think. It would, it, it says something about 2,000 square foot gross footprint being maximum and I, we're over that and I didn't know.
So it would be a major.
So. Right, so.
Situation.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Can you just talk a little bit about the commercial use on the second and third floor now? And versus the, it's because I think in your application, you talk about additional parking somewhere offsite? Additional properties that he owns?
Yes, so.
Just so I understand what the plan is.
So the, right now, the second floor was the old bar tent.
And school and the music lesson.
Okay. And so that's vacant, and then the third floor is vacant.
The third floor was the Masonic Hall.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And so.
Wasn't there a floor or half floor on top of that?
There is, and I, hopefully that was never anything. Yeah. Kind of stretched it, yeah.
So no changes to Crack Skulls and that first floor, just the second and third. Yeah, that's not going to change, right?
You have to reduce yourself from this.
And I, there, there is other properties that Ben owns, several in the neighborhood. I, I can't point them all out, but he could, and, and they're all close by. And actually one up here on Railroad Street, that I do know about, so. But, yeah, you can tell the other.
Yeah, so I, I think the big thing is it's, you know, one thing Mike put into this is actually a net decrease from current use to residential use. So I think that's a big factor of it. But on top of that, I do have 100 Main Street, Wiley House, which, you know, there's probably five tenants there that actually have cars and use parking. So I have additional parking there. And then up on Spring Street and on Central Street, I have three properties there that have additional parking. So I have, I have a good amount of additional parking to use for tenants right now. And then also, I've spoken with, the lot behind Crack Skulls has just become a parking lot. And they have additional spots that they'd be interested in leasing to me as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions?
So the intent is to have no on-street parking for tenants?
On-street, no, because they can't park overnight on-street. Yep. Unless you can get a variance for that.
Bill? Jane? No, anything else?
So some, you actually have encroachments onto the public right-of-way and the abutting lot, is that correct?
I think so, yeah. Because the building's wider than the lot.
I think there's an overhang, but there's an overhang easement of.
For that, kind of those question.
The building may even encroach some too.
Yeah, it probably does.
It's an existing condition.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, I thought he put on, we put on here like the.
You have to have a real line, if the property is narrower than the building.
Yeah. And a couple tents that it overhangs.
It, it's just hard to read. So do you call that out on a note? Do you say it doesn't, but I can't read what note that is? I didn't know if the note was missing.
This has a one-foot easement over onto that property.
Right. Yeah, so on the northeast side, there's a, an easement.
See note nine.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's no note nine on the.
Oh, maybe.
It's on the second page.
Oh, it's on the, it's on the, I'm sorry, yeah, that was the leftover, it's on the survey plan. So the second sheet.
But you're recording the site plan, correct?
Neither.
Neither. I don't think.
Yeah, that's right.
Why is there a plan? That's probably another question.
Right.
We don't usually record plans that don't go through the full process.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the reason I did a plan was just, we didn't know.
I think from a landowner's perspective, having, having a professionally done plan is a great investment.
Right. The survey we have, yeah.
I guess I'm biased with that.
Yeah. It's okay though.
But from the planning board perspective, I wish there was a way that we could guide applicants early on to what they may or may not have to do to meet the requirements.
Especially if they're coming to us for a waiver.
Well, if, if there's no exterior change whatsoever.
Right.
Right. We went through this with.
Surveys cost thousands of dollars.
Yeah. Just a couple of projects.
The old, the old funeral home we went through this with, right?
Right.
Remember they were going to change that and because there's no outside changes, we don't even want a survey plan, we're not, you know, we don't know what the site is. So I agree with you, Bill.
It's tricky for an applicant because they want to dot the i's and cross the t's.
Right.
You know, they've got a lot invested, but I wish there was a way that we could modify our regulations a little bit, maybe minor has to have a little footnote in there. There's no, there's no improvements. Don't do a site plan.
Well, based on these last couple of submissions, I would say that in the future, people come in and talk to Diane and get that upfront, that she thinks the board will not require a plan.
Some, some communities have actually exempted the downtown areas from site plan review requirements for that very reason, because you just don't have the land area or the support additional or new facilities to accommodate the development. I don't think it's appropriate in an area where there's a lot of open space that can be utilized for.
No, no, I agree. Each case is unique.
I think with well-developed zoning, that should work.
Yeah. Because it's really boils down to, like, a change of use is what's the increase or decrease on parking, which is what we would be interested in as a planning board, but.
It doesn't comply.
Right. I agree with you, Bill. We'll set a committee.
I don't think you need a full, as you're saying, you don't need a full-blown plan and there's no parking on here and you're accommodating parking.
This is a pretty obvious, I agree with you.
Absolutely.
How can you complain?
It's a great plan, though.
It is.
It is.
I paid a lot of money for that plan.
Does anybody else have any questions, comments?
I, I think it's terrific that we're adding people downtown. It's going to make the downtown a little more viable and, you know, those people are going to buy coffee and they're all going to buy chicken nuggets and, you know.
I agree. I agree. All right, I see nobody in the public out there to talk, so I will close the public hearing at seven thirty-four. The board have anything else? If nothing, I will entertain a motion for approval.
How about the waivers?
Oh, waivers. Let's go through the waivers. Do you have, I don't have the.
Yeah, no, I'll make a motion to approve the waiver request from site plan review for section one point oh five, B one and C two for eighty-six Main Street LLC, map view two, lot fifty-one, based on the request by the applicant dated June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Any discussion? All in favor of granting the waivers, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you for keeping me on the straight and narrow, Val. I have a schedule to keep. All right, anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
Check the agenda.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the application by C.C. eighty-six Main LLC for the conversion of the second and third floors into six residential units as part of the rehabilitation of the historic building located on the site. With the first floor to, as commercial spaces to remain. And this lot is located at eighty-six Main Street, tax map view two, lot fifty-one in the M.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Good luck. All right. While they're packing up and leaving, any new or old business? Anybody have any new business? Anybody have any old business? Chairman's report? Committee, any committee reports?
We have to gear up for CIP again, it's that time of year.
Yep.
Can we get an update on the economic development work that was being done on the North Main Street corridor, the recreational area and one fifty-two?
Yeah, we're still working with the stakeholders. We're focusing right now on the Newfields Gateway, if you will, where the Rockingham Junction is and the Ballroom. And we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with the so-called stakeholders. We invited and contacted property owners in the area. And the applicants are, applicants, excuse me, the consultants are working on some recommendations and will be presenting those shortly. And that's about all I can report on at this point. Nothing specific, but they're moving towards that.
So the focus is on that phase?
The focus right now is on the Newfields Gateway because I think it's a lot of, there's a lot of interest, development interest in obviously the Ballroom undergoing a new owner.
Okay.
There's some potential there. They're talking to people about the possibility of maybe some kind of a special assessment district or, I would use the term, and I probably shouldn't use it, but tax and her financing district to accommodate the extension of sewer into that area. And they're also talking with the folks over at Newfields to see if there might be some interest in doing some joint ventures down the road. Nothing materialized at this point, but there's still negotiations and discussions.
Okay, thanks.
Where is the one oh eight bridge in the state plan?
As far, they were supposed to be making some improvements to it, I thought, in their five-year, ten-year plan that they submitted. I haven't heard anything recently.
The railroad bridge?
About the railroad bridge over the tracks.
To widen that or.
It's, it's been on plan forever, it seems, and moving will be a very slow bit.
Yeah, that's always a problem.
But I think, you know, part of this study needs to look at that as well.
It's on some plan because we, we provided a survey of it, was it two years ago now?
Yeah.
That's all.
Maybe we can ask.
We can ask the Regional Planning Commission or one of our representatives.
It's hard to really.
Peter Nelson to maybe get us some information.
Right.
Really expand that area without addressing that hazard.
I agree.
Yeah. I agree.
Yeah, unless it's all pedestrian or cycling under the bridge, but it's too narrow, right?
Nothing worse than passing bicyclists on it.
I did the survey because I didn't want anybody else in my office in that hazard.
Going over the bridge.
Yeah.
Is there any connectivity, though, below the bridge?
Well, and that's one of the ideas that's.
People come across the high-speed rail, which is illegal.
Illegal and dangerous.
Dangerous.
Right. It'd be better served with a pedestrian bridge over that, you know, where the, where the old train station is.
Yeah.
Some sort. Because get people off on a way, because nothing worse than driving over that and there's people on bikes and people running and, brutal.
It's really bad.
Man.
Site distance is limited and it's not a good situation. I can ask for a report for the next meeting, though. Would that be helpful, just to get some?
Yeah.
I mean, the Regional Planning Commission is keeping tabs on all these projects and they're facilitating the ten-year plan.
Yep.
And we'll be hearing about that more in the fall, I guess. So I think this would be a good time to ask the question.
Is the, is the plan for that committee, though, still to focus on outdoor activities?
That's what the plan is right now.
Recreation.
Recreation. Of course, the town is talking to some folks who are interested in putting a solar farm up at the Wilson property.
Oh, yeah.
And that's still in the works, from what I understand. It'll be, it's moving very slowly. But, you know, there's a feeling that maybe those uses could be compatible in some way.
Sure.
We've had a hard time getting our friends at the Conway Group to come to the table and work with us. We've tried many, I don't know what the recent status is, but it would be nice to get some buy-in from them moving forward as to what their plans are.
The Wilson piece is probably about to target landmass that the state is looking for for solar sites.
I thought this, I thought you couldn't sell power back anymore, that, that, the waiting list to sell power, I thought was years long.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
And I know that there's a lot of activity in the ocean right now for, and I, I don't know the fifty-gigahertz, whatever they call it.
Yeah.
It's much smaller than the main, state of Maine scale, you know, under thirty-five acres, but there's a lot of activity going on there now.
Diane, do you have, any committee reports?
Um, master planning update? Are we thinking about our next chapter and getting that on the agenda?
Can we get a group together to decide what we want to focus on, like we did last time, and report back to the full board?
Well, I, I think we've kind of done that, right? I think we've prioritized and identified already.
Are we talking about?
Master planning chapter updates?
Yeah, but what, what chapter are we talking about?
Yeah, that's what, I don't have it in front of me, but I think we've had that discussion.
Housing? I mean, that's what we need to have a discussion.
Yeah. So why don't we, at the next meeting, just bring that back as to where we left off with it?
Yeah.
And then see if this particular board wants to modify the, you know, and relative to what any, what resources we have available.
We have resources available to update the master plan come the year two thousand twenty-five. That's not that far away.
That's for a full rewrite, right?
Well, we have seventy-five thousand dollars to do it.
If we choose to do a rewrite.
But do we want to do a rewrite or do we want to do a chapter at a time?
What we have.
We want to, I mean, we could start the process early and get as much input as possible. I know people have said that it's always helpful to have visioning sessions to be able to get a sense of what the consensus of the community is going forward. Yes, we can put that on the agenda for the August meeting.
All right. It's a good idea. Anybody have anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion?
Is there a second?
How quick can I be, okay? Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Everybody make sure you shut your microphone.